Six o'clock.
In the house.
Yeah, I'll call the meeting to order if everyone would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
The first order of business is the approval of the agenda, and I'd just like to add a couple things to the agenda under new business. If we could add for C, under new business, exchange student, and D, custodial position, wellness center. So a motion would be in order to approve the agenda with those additions.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mike, any discussion?
Who's the name of that second one, Janet or what?
Custodial position for the wellness center.
What was the other one, Lisa, I'm sorry?
Exchange student.
Exchange student.
Thank you. I feel like you guys are all the way down there. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We don't have any general public with this, so we'll move on to the Polton High School bleacher update. Louis?
I didn't put that on.
Oh, okay, I presume that was, so we have no update?
Uh, no, yeah, we were gonna see if Joe could give us an update, but Joe is on vacation, so we can wait until September.
Okay. All right, how about co-mingling of ballots? Is that you, Louis?
That is me.
Okay.
I didn't put it on there, I don't know why it's on there, but I can speak to it.
Okay.
We're writing the status, Louis.
Yeah, just an update.
I spoke with Betsy at the beginning of the summer, we went through all the questions that the board had about the taxpayer layer, she did confirm some of the questions, like if we add this, we would still need to hand count them once, but, and I think it was at the original locations, but it does save the having to hand count them again when you're combining them, and she found that that would be a big savings. I know those questions about compatibility and longevity, and, for instance, the compatibility, only one person sells, you're buying directly from the state, so as long as the state does not change their overall system, it would last, and I think they said the one that has lasted for many, many years. So as long as the state doesn't change their system that they're using, then the compatibility will last for many years. So the cost was, I think it was about six or seven thousand, and then a $1,200 software charge, which would be a reoccurring charge, and that was all in line with what we had at the original discussion that we had, I think it was a few months ago at this point.
Yeah.
So we, I did reach out to her about two weeks ago, and she was on vacation, and when I reached back out to her, I was going to start the process, actually move forward with purchasing it, ask for the more direction. She was on vacation, and last week I was on vacation, so it is on my to-do list to reach back out to her and move forward with that, so it's in place for the next election.
Okay. So we'll put this on for September, just to see where we are, that it's purchased?
Sure, yep. The direct from the board was to move forward with the cost not to exceed $8,000, and that was my plan.
Okay.
That $1,200, I think, is per election.
Yeah, per, I guess, per vote.
So, yeah, yeah, the thing we want, we make sure, for some reason, if it failed, we had a vote in August, let's say, and then we had to revote in October, that would then become $2,400, because it's per vote.
Right.
Correct, yeah.
Or if you had a special meeting or anything, yeah.
And then for those costs, I know when we talked, actually, that, well, what happens if we vote down the budget in this town or any other town, there's a cost to have any election that's one of them, it's the people that run the election, and if there's, so usually the cost of having another election is a couple thousand dollars, and that's just one of those costs.
Yeah. Okay, great.
That's not $1,200 a town, it's just $1,200 of...
A vote.
It's for the ballots.
The use of the machine.
It's a program for the ballots.
Yeah. All right, community use of school facilities, Jim?
This was a discussion that's been ongoing, I think you'd asked for us to kind of come back and, about the fees that were being collected or being used.
Yeah.
And just for more information on this, but trying to come, you know, discuss about whether we wanted to apply one fee across the Quarry Valley, or we want to, or look at how we're doing our fee collecting, because I know in the past, there has been some discrepancies between schools in terms of who collects a fee, who kind of waives a fee, so I think we wanted to make sure that we are, have some continuity in terms of how we're applying our procedure.
So we're just kind of still collecting?
Well, I think we're, one, I think when the policy is approved, we can then look at the procedural piece, and I think one of the procedural pieces can be the fees that we're collecting, we can discuss the continuity at that time, so, but we're still, H4 is still not been approved as of yet.
Okay.
It's still hanging out there.
And who's looking at the fees and stuff?
That's something that, once that's approved, we can then, you know, admins, myself, we can then bring it to the board to show, here's our current fees, and then we can look at the, our current procedures and share with the board, and give board feedback on, on fees and about, and when we want to collect them, when we want to waive, particularly for resident use, or...
Yeah, 'cause that, this was brought up not to hinder the local people using the stuff, still free and everything, this is for the people that are renting the gyms that are making huge dollars for profit, that's the...
Correct, like someone's renting for that, or like having an event, or somebody's running a sports camp on our sites, and we're waiving a fee, but, but I think that's just what we were, one of the things we talk about is the application, so we are, we're on the same page in terms of what we are allowing, what we're not allowing, so.
Yep, I think that sounds great. All right, the GRCSU Wellness Program Update, Bill had provided that to us at the GRCSU handout, so I just put that in your pocket, so everybody kind of knew where we're moving, what that's looking like. I anticipate probably maybe in November, we'll have another one from Bill, but we need to give him a little time to get in there, get things up and running, but this was just to give you a little insight, you know, where they are right now, that they are gonna have five students, you know, staffing and things like that, so...
Can we put anything out about it to, like, to the community, to, like, Poltoni community? Like, something like this, just a very update, or is this just for us?
So, I think we could talk with, I'll speak with Bill about a, an SU update, they can go out to all members of SU about this program. I know there's a lot of misinformation that's kind of out there.
Yes.
And people are creating their own narrative about what this program is and what it isn't.
As only they can.
Right, and so I think, yeah, having Bill just send out a communication to, across the SU, because it will impact all of the SU, I know, but it will be housed in Poltoni, so there's probably, you know, some concern, just, you know...
And maybe we could have principals incorporate that in their newsletter or something.
Oh, that would be grand, yes.
Okay, so if Bill puts something together, building admin incorporated in their, in a newsletter.
Appreciate that.
Have we added any more money to that since the last?
Any more money to that program?
Yeah.
Well, it's an SU program, so we have allocated, we allocated funds for, as it says in the handout, for that specific staff, and then we're gonna talk about here in just a couple seconds, about a position, and sharing that with that center here, so...
Because the first thing was how much?
The lease wasn't about $24,000 or something like that?
The lease is $2,000 a month.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe a must, didn't you?
Tom, there's been no additional cost.
$2,000 or no?
No, $300 something.
I think, I think part of the discussion was, what's the cost when we have to send them out, if I remember right, Louis, right? There was some talk about what we wind up paying if we send them out versus what we're trying to do to retain them, that was...
Oh, I thought we voted on something to get it going, no?
Well, not here, no, 'cause it's a SU, so we voted at the SU to approve it and to fund it, but a lot of it's being funded through grants.
Just reallocation of where it's going, it's not additional money.
I already approved some kind of money to go, or something, because I said something about a money pit, and you said, "No, no, no, I made sure that wasn't gonna happen."
There was a PowerPoint present, and it showed amounts.
Yeah, he gave option one, two, and three for things, but it was more informational for this board than anything, because it's an SU initiative, so...
I know, but some of the money comes from us, so we should...
Right, but it's special ed, so it's based on students, and so currently, we have...
So, Tom, if you'd like, I could ask Bill, as part of the updates, to, you know, put a cost, if there's additional costs or expenses.
Maybe I missed, I thought last meeting, we were talking about it, and you said you voted on it, at the...
Right, I think the discussion...
Meeting before this one, and then, I know I was saying, "Here we go, and we're adding a building," and you said, "No more cost," or something. I could be...
Yeah, I mean, it did talk about big numbers, he did talk about starting a business and what that looked like and everything in the PowerPoint, but, yeah, the lease was $2,000 a month, we talked about that, we talked about, like, most of the employees are grant-funded employees that are going in there, so, and a lot of, we've talked about, like, even stuff they need in the building to start up, all of our buildings, and even now that we're moving to SU, we have a lot of things that we can send over there to help, you know, staff or to tables, chairs, things like that, so there shouldn't be like that, so...
And I think what Mike was saying too, I mean, it's really a reallocation of expense, so we have students that we're going to retain, we sent for them, where we were in this program, or we're going to an outside program, so the hope is to keep those kids within, in our program, not having to send them to outside schools, and so it's...
I get all that, but I just don't want another building turning into, okay, now it's gonna be...
It's one year.
Three million a year to run, you know what I'm saying?
So it was a one-year contract.
It seems to get out of control.
It's a small, it's a small space that we're renting.
We're not, that's, yeah, I just want to make sure it doesn't gain traction and we end up...
And it needs renewal by, renewal by the SU board, because it's for just one year, so it's not ongoing.
Right. Yeah.
Get that, let me know if that's...
Okay, moving on to new business, Quarry Valley Boardwork, I didn't really put anything down tonight for that, 'cause we kind of have a heavy agenda. Is there anything anybody wants to speak to? If not, we can kind of move on. I think that next month, we'll probably talk more about that, talk some more about strategic plan and things like that. The handbooks, so everybody received the handbooks in your drive? I have hard copies of the handbooks here, if there was anything anybody wanted to look at, question, comment, anything about it. I thought, I like the Quarry Valley High School handbook, I like the way it's certainly coming together more and more with the level of continuity, uniformity, I mean, I, we obviously still have, you know, some improvements to go and make, but it's certainly, from where we started to where we are, it's huge, and hopefully in the next year, we can do that with elementary school as well. So, since there's only two of you, it should be, well, Jay, I guess, but, I mean, it should be a breeze, Jay's already been through the high school, so he should be able just to, like, wizy right through it, so... Any questions, comments about the handbooks, any concerns?
No, read them, looked at them, they're good.
All right.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Great.
Appreciate it.
All right, the next one is exchange student, and I'm gonna turn that over to Jim.
This is both a sort of personal and proper request, I would request my family personally about bringing an exchange student into her home, and we agree if you live in a choice area, and I, for future purposes, would like to bring that person to a proper, and in the paperwork from Pax International, they do not allow schools to charge tuition, it's a pretty standard practice, there's two, I brought them in high school, one out of Valley, Mill River, they're all over the district, so I wanted to request that the tuition charge be waived to some purpose exchange student.
I'll make a motion.
Linda makes a motion to waive the tuition for the exchange student from Rutland Town. Discussion.
Would there be any impact, if there was any special needs, you don't usually get those with exchange students, but would there be any...
I don't anticipate that, that's...
So the school received all the paperwork, and there is no...
No additional requirement for the student. All right.
So that'd be just the tuition cost, or not anything else that's involved?
No, no, that'd be the responsibility of the host family.
Lunch.
Well, they all get free lunch, don't they? Isn't that where we're at? All right.
One of them, you can offer.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Where are we now? D, I made all these little notes, I lost myself. Custodial position at the Wellness Center, so I'm gonna turn this over to Louis.
So the Wellness Center is looking for a half-time custodial position, working, keeping the building clean, as well as potentially doing some transportation of students from the Wellness Center to Poltoni Elementary School. The current plan is for those students to still participate in some programs at the elementary school, including specials, breakfast, lunch, stuff like that, to keep them as part of the program. It is difficult to find a half-time position, especially with the type of schedule this person might need to have, so what I am recommending is that we hire a full-time custodian that will... Currently, we told this position is being hired, Bill has been utilizing Poltoni staff, custodial staff for building needs, so my recommendation is to hire a full-time custodian, half will be paid by the Wellness Center program, the other half would be paid by Quarry Valley, and it'll be used as a Poltoni custodian. To help offset costs, we would reduce the mowing contract that was put into the budget two years ago, and that would offset about half of Poltoni's cost, so the net cost would be roughly $10,000 to $15,000.
Discussion, questions for Louis?
Well, it bears, and I can hear him over there laughing about it, it bears the fact of, "Here, here we go," he said. So is there any way we could find it, and can we use somebody from...
Well, they currently have an open position in Poltoni for a custodian, that's been open for a bit now, so it's not like, we're not creating a new position, it's a position that's open in Poltoni, and technically, we're kind of getting a bit, more of the benefit, but only paying half of the bill. So, otherwise, it's probably gonna be difficult, as Louis said, because you're looking at having, they're probably gonna want someone there in the morning, right, to, like, shovel the snow, or make sure, I mean, everything's good to go for a little bit, and then they might have to come back in the afternoon if they have to, or noon time if they have to transport someone, come back in the evening, trash, those kinds of things, so my guess is, don't tell Bill this, but we're probably gonna get the custodian a little bit more than they're going to be using there, because it's going to be such an odd, you know, maybe he's there, you know, 7:30 to 8:15, then he goes back 11:30 to something and like that, so, and then, as Louis said, having this person, so we're gonna reduce the mowing, right, so that was a contract of, yeah, so now we're getting the mowing and a half-time custodian for $15,000, so...
Mowing is where?
At Poltoni?
At the...
The field.
The schools, okay, the schools.
Because I know that they, Poltoni does a lot of their own mowing, the custodians do, so...
No, yeah, it's under contract, it's...
It is under contract, okay, okay.
Poltoni did the mowing about two years ago, until they lost, they lost, we cut a custodial position about two years ago.
Okay, thank you. It sounds amiable.
I think the management of that custodian needs to be clearly defined as to who he reports to and who says what he does and when he does it, so that there's not a conflict between so-and-so asked me to do this, and so-and-so asked me to do that, so he knows or she knows when, what their responsibilities are, and can't be pulled off of something to do something else when they...
And that's something which we'll have to work with Bill on, because with 50% of it being funded through special education, it's similar to what we used to have with bill backs, and we, you know, cannot say we're, you know, 50% of this job, but yet 80% is being used for other custodians.
Right.
So Bill is going to have to really keep a close eye on this and work with, you know, Kristen and Joe and Rich as well, and make sure that's balanced.
Will we be able to determine who, who tells that person, who has direct supervisory authority over him, so that it wouldn't be assumption that the plant manager in the town can say, "Well, I need him here to do this," so that there's not a conflict, so he knows, understand what I'm talking about, the management part of it, so if there's a clear defining, and somebody has the authority to say no, or yes, whatever.
I think what Bill will have to do is, he'll have to set, here is the schedule, and here are the hours, then outside of those hours, then that would give...
Rich, yeah.
Rich, the flexibility to use it, use this individual however is all fit.
So if, if Bill said between the hours of 7:30 to, you know, 12:30 every day, he'll be working with, you know, with the Wellness Center program, and then after 12:30, then he can assist with mowing or any other things that Rich, you know, Kristen or Joe, if necessary.
I don't think you're gonna get around having kind of two people being in charge.
Yeah, that's what I mean, is the person who's working needs to know who they, who has final say as to what they...
Honestly, it might not be one person, it might be two people.
Well, that's, whatever.
It's a half a position, but it might be two different people, because you might have a morning shift person and afternoon shift person, and so some of the morning shift person's responsibilities will be the Wellness Center.
So I think Rich would be the direct report, but it's gonna be a collaboration between Rich and Bill to figure out what the needs of that program are, because I think what Bill and Rich have been working closely already together, and Rich is going to be overseeing the maintenance of that building with direct reports to Bill as far as the needs of that building, so, I mean, I think Rich is taking, has already taken that lead on and helping him with some of the, getting that building up and running, so I think Rich would be the direct report to whoever he's assigning to do the work that's at that building.
So you're saying that that person would be only responsible for that building, or there could be other custodians that may be involved with that building?
There may need to be two.
Okay.
Because if someone needs to be there at six o'clock to shovel, that person's not going to be also working in the afternoon, because their eight-hour shift may end at two, and then you have somebody that should go in the evening to clean bathrooms, empty garbages, do wipe downs, vacuum, whatever that is, and that may be the evening person that's gonna jump over from, from the elementary school.
That's what I was saying, that, from what Chris said, is maybe defined hours of what needs to be done, but you might not be able to define those hours, and you may have two sets of defined hours, if you will, you may say that the employee work, I'm just using this as an example, six hours. Is there gonna be some fluidity in there to allow because of change, so maybe on a certain day, he may only do this for three hours, where on another day, he may do it for seven, so we're talking about cumulative hours and physical hours, which can be two different things, because you have school open from such, from open to close, but you need that person to be fluid there, so, I just don't want the person to feel, or whoever, needs to understand who, who is assigning them to do what, so if there's any issues that come up, there's sort of a chain of command to come back to resolve any issues that might come up.
And then, as Louis said, Rich would be the direct report, and then Bill would liaise with, with Rich in terms of making sure needs are being met, so really, Rich would be the, like I said, the kind of go-between, and then if...
So that this person would be Rich as an employee?
Not to put this individual kind of caught between.
Yeah.
But Rich doesn't oversee bus schedules and stuff like that, because that's...
It's not really a bus schedule, per se, it's really just transporting them, if they need to be transported, like, from the school, from the Wellness Center back to the school.
Is that the van that they'll be using?
Yeah.
The van, okay.
So that's the only, the only transfer, he wouldn't be taking them to Rutland for any kind of other whatever, whatever, whatever?
No, it would just be that, like, for lunch, or for specials, or things like that.
There's other kids, one is from, will he be, is there, the other school child is from Wells, maybe?
We can't really discuss.
Yeah, so, but, children that are coming from other schools will be transported by their home school to the facility, it wouldn't be the responsibility of this employee.
I'm just wondering if he's going to transport more than just the Poltoni child.
So, so if children need to be transported, Bill currently has a maximum of five right now, that, that's the capacity, so if, you know, let's say, if five children would need to be transported to the elementary school for lunch, say it's a, you know, rainy day, or just staff, or I can't come over and assist, for whatever reason, that individual would be able to transport those individuals for lunch and then back, and that would be the only transportation that they would do, or for a special, or things along those lines.
But it would just be from the Wellness Center to the elementary school, any, any student to...
To any elementary school?
No, just to Poltoni, yeah.
Just to Poltoni, okay, that's all I wanted to know, thank you.
Yeah, that would be the, that would be the breadth of the transportation, nothing else.
Okay.
Any other questions? You look puzzled, Tom.
Isn't Rich the head guy for Poltoni Maintenance, the buildings?
Yeah.
So we're short a custodian, and was it last year, last budget season, he was beside himself, he's got two buildings, doesn't have enough help, I can't fix everything, and now we're gonna give him another building.
Correct, but we're adding another person.
So it's a half person, where's a half person back, so he's getting additional support to help him?
Because currently, they have 4.8 custodians?
Correct, yeah, I think they have 4.8 currently filling, and have one open position, is that correct?
We have, Rich is there in the morning with us until about 10, 10:30, when the other person comes in, and we have that one who works through the day, and then someone comes from high school at night to help get between them.
Yep.
That's the way it's been going for the past.
So this is adding another, giving them, well, it's adding another person that Rich will oversee, that will share his work between the Wellness Center and Poltoni Schools.
Oh, we're already down one?
Right.
I believe so, I'm not, I, the sheet that I was looking at today showed that, that may have been filled, though. I was looking at a staff log, do you know if you have any vacancies currently?
We have this vacancy.
Just this vacancy, okay, so all the positions have been filled, so the sheet that I was looking at didn't ship, I thought I was showing, was showing a vacancy, but that might not be the case.
So they have 4.8, they have 5.8, and so this would make 6.8, okay. So we're getting another person there for $15,000, we're not paying for mowing, and they're gonna be half-time in the, in the schools, so...
Poltoni used to have 6.8 positions, we cut it two years ago for budget restrictions, Poltoni hasn't been asking to add that.
Well, we cut it and we contracted out mowing, so...
Correct.
And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just saying, because I know what's gonna happen, he's gonna get overwhelmed, and I can see why, with three buildings, that need, I mean, I can see it, and then it's, hey, I need more help.
I haven't spoken with Rich directly, I've spoken with Bill, and Bill has said that Rich has been very helpful with the preparation of the new building.
I get all that, but once the kids move into all three buildings, there's more maintenance, but he was struggling with two, and now we're, is he gonna get overwhelmed with three buildings?
I think the addition of this, if you didn't add the position, I think definitely he would be, I mean, if things were tight, so I think with this addition of the new position, that will help him be able to serve both his buildings and the building. I mean, the needs for this building shouldn't be too great, I mean, it's, it is a very small building, I mean, it's, I think...
We always start out like that, I get it, but this, like I said, this could snowball into a...
Well, this is a one, the contract is for one year.
It's only five rooms, yeah.
Yeah.
What is snowball, Tom?
Like I said, you go from five rooms, and then, wow, we got a part-time custodian, we really need a full-time custodian, we figured it out, so now you're adding a full one, and then, wow, this, this isn't big enough, we need an addition, everything always, it just, it just gets bigger.
Yeah, but we, we'd have to, we'd have to be in a different building.
That's probably part of the reason why it was, you know...
One year.
In March, we'll come back for the board, the board will review whether or not they want to continue with this program, or cancel or shift, so I don't think that the program doesn't have an opportunity to expand without board approval.
Right, and, and the board was pretty clear with Bill, when he came at the SU level, that it was one year, that we'd need updates, that this is what we were doing, and that in March, we would look at the totality of everything and decide if we... in March, we would look at the totality of everything and decide if we were signing contracts to go forward, so if he suddenly comes back and says, I need a full-time this and two more of this, the board's probably going to have a serious conversation, but that.
But will they say no?
Well, Louis could also bring the data as to what it costs to maintain that program after a year versus what it might cost us if we don't have it, so there's, there could be some financial data that we could look at, too.
Yeah, and this program really doesn't have the opportunity to expand too much, I mean, it is literally a small space.
Yeah.
Right now, it's a small space, I get it, and I'm not putting you on the, I get it, but.
This actual building is a small space.
I get all that.
In order for it to expand, it would have to move to another building, and if that building is in West Rutland, then that might be a different discussion where they're sharing resources with West Rutland, or Proctor, or something like that, but this actual building, it's only a couple thousand square feet, it is literally a small space.
I get it, for now, we're starting out, I get it, but.
Well, that's where we are, that's where we are for a year.
Just seems to get bigger, everything.
Well, for a year, we're not getting bigger, so. A motion would be in order to approve Louis's recommendation of hiring one full-time custodian in Poltoni and have it paid half by Quarry Valley and half by Special Ed for the Wellness Center.
I will make the motion.
Any further, oh, further discussion?
The other thing that Bill had said in the GRCSU is that the need for this kind of a program in maybe Rutland County is big, because people are sending kids to programs.
Out of state.
Out of state, and if this program is successful, that this could be a program that could be offered to other schools, and we would, they would have to pay a tuition to the GRCSU to tuition their child into this program.
Right.
So if in the year it's successful, he could possibly, say, offer it to one other student out of the district, and that would bring money into the district that would help the program.
Right.
I get all that, but, and I get it, it's good, you need stuff, but just.
I think he's worried about the snowball effect.
Everything snowballs, we just, we gotta, we need, now we need ten people, now we need forty, it just.
Well, it's capped at five students currently, so I don't, I don't see it snowballing like that personally, but.
Not the first year, but.
Well, that's a conversation, so.
But does GRCSU, they all talk a big game. Yeah, here's some more.
You're welcome to join that meeting at the GRCSU when the conversation takes place.
I was on that at one point.
We were pretty insistent about managing costs, and there was, Louis was, went over the rack a couple of times about what projected cost was being, and it appeared to be there was two things that were involved, cost was a concern, and how we retain the students we would otherwise lose, and Louis, I believe you sort of said, for the most part, when we do send them out, we rarely get them back, so.
Bill has said that.
Yeah, yeah.
And the goal is also, so we have five students, that we hope that, you know, the, this center and the work that's being done, that we don't have the same five students when we start school as when we end school, the hope is that the work is done and students can move in and move out, so, so that's the other thing that we're looking for, for this program that Bill talked about, so.
Could that happen, you think it could happen, say they do move out, then we'd have a slot open, and if we didn't have a, if we didn't have a student to go in there, which I know probably that's not true, but possibly, then maybe Bill would bring it back to us even within the year, to say, I have a slot open, could we open it to the.
So I, and I'm not going to speak for Bill, but I don't foresee that happening, based upon just, you know, the needs of our students, I think we're.
We have now.
I do believe Bill, Bill, and Bill could provide more information about this, but I know that there's, I do believe a forty-five day limit on this program, so students will not be there in the duration of the school year, it really is more for short-term.
Right.
You know, just to work, so. There will be some fluidity and movement in and out over the course of the year.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes by majority. All right, moving on to the minutes, the minutes of July thirteenth are in your pocket, a motion would be in order to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mike, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, approval of warrants, warrants are sent to you via your GRCSU email, questions should be directed to Louis, a motion will be in order for the approval of the warrants.
A motion to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, superintendent's report, you've received in your pocket, any questions for Chris about the superintendent's report? Okay, principal reports, any questions about the principals' reports?
The after-school programs.
Are we thinking, the gist I got, the reading between the lines, it's, we're not going, probably won't be Tapestry, but the schools are standing up their own after-school programs?
At this point, I'm not sure if it has.
So, so we made the decision, after consulting with our admins last year, to break our partnership with Tapestry, just for a variety of reasons, it wasn't because anything that they weren't doing, it's just, we looked at where our needs were at and what we had to move it forward, so we were working with our building admins on developing summer and after-school programs, we are currently looking at partnering with Boys and Girls Club in our schools to assist admins and take some of the heavy lifting off, but that would be something we'd be transitioning throughout the course of the year, so we begin the year with after-school programs in our schools, if, you know, staff-dependent, and then we'll sort of make that transition to Boys and Girls programs in our schools, which will still be offering after-school enrichment, so that is our plan, our goal, so, and Louis, I met with the representative from Boys and Girl Club, and we're looking to set up a meeting with the admins, myself and Louis. We do understand, you know, the need and the importance of having after, after-school, but it is difficult sometimes when you're relying upon staff to go through, so I think that's been some of the headaches and difficulty that we've found, so I, you know, if any of you have anything you want to add to that.
Yeah, my kid went through the summer programming at the elementary school, and it was great, so they'll do a great job, and I understand that, yeah, the staffing challenges around that, so thanks for the updates.
And those are the same challenges we have with Tapestry, where, you know, Tapestry was trying to find staff, but just couldn't find staff, so that's, we know it's been a sore subject, because we have a lot of parents who need that, but we're doing our best to try to provide that, so.
Creative solutions, that's right.
Yes.
Anything else, anything building admin would like to share? It's like a Pandora's box. Anything you are going to be interested in.
It won't cost Tom any money.
It doesn't, but it is, they just required about that practical, we're hosting, for the Math Museum to go, they send carnival games that are math-related, applicable for K through twelve, pre-K through twelve students, and so that will be at Practor the week of September eighteenth, and I've been working with all the admin about sending over their students in different shifts so that they can enjoy that, we also have a community day, where communities can come in and kind of test out their math skills, and that day we're still working on, but that one will come up soon.
Awesome. All right, if there's nothing else, we will let you guys go, you don't have to stay here, and as our gift to you, with school beginning, we're not going to require that you come in September. So when you come and.
Were you hoping for something else?
You can, but you don't have to.
You got the flowers and chocolate.
You can, yeah, you can, but you don't have to. Well, we're not going to be here, hopefully we're going to be across the street, so we'll be in our new, new place, so. All right, thank you all very much, moving on to finance, Louis.
So earlier in the meeting, I handed out the year-end summary report, so I'm almost done reconciling, I have three small things to complete, of course, small and dollar, but one of them's a little bit of a struggle, but I saw, so I haven't had the chance to complete that before tonight, but I wanted to give you where we stand as of right now. So we have ended the year with a surplus of approximately six hundred ninety thousand, that may change slightly, but nothing significant, nothing more than five thousand or so, so immaterial compared to where we are at this point, so I've highlighted some of the major variances that we have, so revenue was over budget by approximately thirty-five thousand, the biggest items that are affecting revenue, tuition revenue was actually below target, seventy-six thousand, that was just due to less students than we had estimated, interest revenue due to the increase in interest rates across the nation, we saw a significant impact with thirty-two thousand dollars above budget, prior year revenue, that was a surplus refund from the SU from the prior year, twenty-nine thousand dollars, and then there was lots of other little miscellaneous revenues that added up to forty-nine thousand dollars, and the second page in your packet shows all of those variances, so there was like student activity income for ninety-three thousand, rental income, driver's education was above budget, and then some other state revenue, and those totaled forty-nine thousand dollars. Expense savings, I've highlighted some of the major categories there, we had two hundred seventy-six thousand dollars in salary and benefit savings, and that's due to several different reasons, we had some unfilled positions, we had some savings due to some grant funding, some positions that we had in the local budget, but we funded through grants, resulting in total savings for those positions, as well as some changes in benefits. The other item which was not included in previous forecasts, so we knew we were going to end with a surplus, a pretty significant surplus, but it has grown over the last few months, and this is one item that has resulted in it growing, so the Special Ed assessment refund of two hundred and four thousand dollars, so the SU did end with a pretty large surplus in the Special Ed fund, and Quarry Valley's portion was approximately two hundred and five thousand dollars, which resulted in a refund. The general fund also ended with a surplus, that has, that is not included in here, typically in the past, we have given the Special Ed refund in the current year, but the general Ed, the general fund refund, we've given in the following year, we have brought that to the SU board, and given them the option to either refund it, so like last year's surplus would be used to back it, in this current year, by twenty-four, or we've given them the option to put in that by twenty-five's budget, the last few years, they've taken the refund in the current year, so that's what we're going to expect this year. The surplus in the general fund was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the board has designated fifty thousand of that to set aside for expenses related to the moving of the SU office, that would include moving expenses, new technology purchases, security purchases, maybe new furniture for the conference room, and furniture for the offices, we don't know that it'll, how much it'll amount to, we don't anticipate it exceeding fifty thousand, but there may be some money left over that will be refunded to the boards, along with the other hundred thousand dollars, I'll be accounting for that all separately, and once we're done moving and we know exactly how much that costs, I'll bring that amount to the board to let them know along with the details. Fuel, oil, and electric were actually significantly over budget, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, that was due to the big increase in oil prices over the last year, supply, equipment, and dues and fees were all underspent by approximately a hundred and twenty-one thousand across the district, we had ninety-three thousand dollars in repair savings that were under budget, twenty-one thousand in legal, legal services being under budget, and that's mostly due to the fact that we are not, we were not in negotiations last year, but we had settled both agreements the year before, so this year, we will start support staff negotiations, and then next year, teachers' negotiations, so we will see an uptick in those legal expense fees. Transportation savings were twenty-three thousand dollars, and then the substitute savings were approximately six thousand dollars. I've also listed some of our reserve funds below, we have a hundred and forty-eight thousand sitting in our HRA reserve fund, so that's a healthcare reimbursement, what that means is, so each year, we put a portion, a percentage of the HRA liability into this reserve fund through our budgeting process, and so our total expenses have been less than what we've been putting into this reserve fund, so we don't put the hundred percent of what our liabilities are, we're putting eighty percent of our liabilities into the reserve fund, so some years, we may spend more than budget, some years, we may spend less than, less than budget, so to date, we've spent less than budget, as, if we continue to spend less than budget each year and this continues to grow, at some point, we may want to take money out of this and add it to our surplus.
Does that accumulate, Louis, is that something that can stay in there and accumulate, or does it have to be zeroed out at the end of the year?
So we're not zeroing it out, it has been accumulating over the last few years since we've moved to this HRA reserve model, we've ended with a surplus each year, and that's been growing.
So if you got a year that there was a little bit more, this would be able to absorb that a little bit, yeah, just so it kind of gives us some cushion.
If this amount eventually gets too large, we'll want to take some of that out. Co-curricular, or capital improvement fund, that's the money that we've been putting into that fund over the last few years to help fund capital improvements in all of our buildings, the co-curricular fund, two hundred and seven, I'm sorry, I didn't say the amount, the capital improvement fund, nine hundred and seventy-four thousand, the co-curricular fund, two hundred and seventeen thousand, again, that's the amount we funded, we went to the taxpayers and they gave us approval to put that into that fund, humanities grant, that's just a private grant, that'll be spent this year, and then the Visbit Fund, sixty-one thousand, that was an insurance check because of the damage for the Proctor roof, we received another hundred and one thousand dollars just a couple days ago for the Proctor roof, a couple months ago, the board approved having that roof repaired, the two checks will cover, I believe, about ninety-seven percent of the cost, the cost that we don't know yet is, in order to replace the roof correctly, we need to take the HVAC system off the roof so that the roof can be re-roofed and then put the HVAC system back on the roof, Jamie, the facilities director at Proctor, is still working on getting quotes on that visit. So those are all the significant variances, I passed a copy of the revenue and the expense report, if there's any questions now or in the future, you can feel free to email me, call me, as you have a chance to ask.
Okay, and could, or are there any questions? Can you give us an idea of the budget timeline where we're looking to start?
So my plan is in October, I will present to you a budget timeline, which will outline our monthly steps, and at that time, we'll have some preliminary discussions on budget priorities that you'd like to see us discussing as administrators and bring to you as a board, parameters for the budget as far as percentages and stuff like that, and other discussions that you really want us to go back and research and bring to you at future meetings, November, I'll present the first draft, and then December, we'll get a second draft, and then the plan and hope would be that early January, we would have an approved budget.
Okay, sounds good. Any questions for Louis? All right, thank you, Louis. Moving on, here are the updated, let me hand these out, I should have done that earlier. These are, these are the updated contract information.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, I thought there was, didn't act like there was, okay. So. support staff, Jaden Kelly, West Rutland summer custodian, thirteen dollars and eighteen cents an hour. Rebecca Hamilton, PRES, pre-K para, sixteen sixty-six an hour. Any questions about those? I'm guessing Jaden is done, or he's continuing on? Guess we should have asked Jay while he was here?
He's going to be a substitute for Louis here.
Oh, he's going to be a sub. So, so it, should it say sub instead of summer?
I believe that was one that, was that one that, I believe that he's going to, he reported him as a, he's also going to be a sub.
Okay, all right. It was strange. He was on here now for summer custodian, I thought. Okay, great. Extracurricular, Keith Harrington, Poltoni Elementary Athletic Schedular, fifteen-hundred stipend. Keith Harrington, Poltoni Elementary Vermont History Day Advisor, sixteen eighty-nine stipend. Philip Whitman, Poltoni Elementary Five-Six Soccer Coach, eleven thirty-two stipend. Georgiana Hall, Poltoni High School Yearbook Advisor, thirteen eighty-four stipend. Joanna Trout, Poltoni High School National Honor Society Co-Advisor, two-hundred-and-forty-one fifty cents stipend. Lauren Harvey, Poltoni High School National Honor Society Co-Advisor, two-forty-one fifty stipend. Dave Catman, Poltoni High School Varsity Football, three, three thousand three sixty-four stipend. Dave Catman, Poltoni JV Football, two thousand three eighty-two stipend. Hannah Corkman-Liptula, Poltoni High School Varsity Girl Soccer Coach, two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seven stipend. Joanna Morris, Poltoni High School JV Soccer Coach, sixteen hundred stipend. Megan Franzone, Poltoni High School Varsity Football Cheerleading Coach, three-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-four stipend. Is that the way it's broken out on the co-curricular as different, um, oh. Michaela Woodbury, Poltoni High School Seven-Eight Cheerleading Coach, eleven thirty-two stipend. Joanna Decab, Poltoni High School Varsity Cross Country Coach, two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seven stipend. Joanna Decab, Poltoni High School Seven-Eight Cross Country Coach, fourteen-eleven stipend. Joanna Decab, Poltoni High School Licenseure Board Member stipend to be determined. Keith Harrington, Poltoni High School Vermont History Day Advisor, sixteen eighty-nine stipend. Melissa Christensen, Poltoni High School National Art Honor Society Advisor, four-eighty-three stipend. Don Slary, Poltoni High School Student Adv, Council Advisor, six-ninety-nine stipend. Melissa Christensen, Poltoni High School Art Club Advisor, seven-oh-seven stipend. Steven Bart, Bart, Bartonstein, Poltoni High School Model Congress Advisor, six-ninety-nine stipend. Jamie Malazo, Poltoni High School Senior Class Advisor, thirteen eighty-four stipend. Jessica Ober, Poltoni Junior Class Co-Advisor, two-forty-one fifty stipend. Roban Alt, Poltoni Junior Class Advisor, two-ninety-seven fifty stipend. Why is that weird? If they're both, one is two-forty-one fifty and one is two-ninety-seven fifty. Junior Class, Poltoni High School, co-advisors. That's not right. They should both be two-forty-one fifty. Pamela Chellis, Poltoni High School Sophomore Co-Advisor, two-forty-one fifty. Susan Harris, Poltoni High School Sophomore Class Co-Advisor, two-forty-one fifty. Rachel Lynch, Poltoni High School Freshman Co-Advisor, this doesn't make sense, two-ninety-seven fifty. There's nobody else as a co-advisor though, and that's the full price.
Well, it's down, uh, second from the bottom.
Well, that one's wrong then too, though. Jennifer Deppert, Poltoni High School Eighth Grade Class Advisor, four-eighty-three stipend. Matthew Parker, Proctor High School Varsity Boys Soccer Coach, three thousand. Jeff Patch, Quarry Valley Bass Fishing Coach, five hundred. Tia Hughes, Poltoni Elementary Summer Teaching Substitute, forty dollars an hour. Catherine McWaters, Poltoni High School Drama Coach, thirteen eighty-four stipend. Brooke DeBonis, Poltoni High School Freshman Co-Class Advisor, two-forty-one fifty. Richard Welch, Poltoni Elementary Three-Four Co-Edge Soccer Coach, eleven thirty-two. So, I don't think some of these are right.
Keith Harrington is on here twice, I think.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Yeah, but they're all different things.
One's the elementary school and one's the high school, usually.
Yeah, so the Poltoni...
I have a question about the, uh,
Go ahead.
National Honor Society. Why do we have two people doing that? They're both the same cost, but why do we need two people for that? Lauren Harvey and Joanna?
No, there, there usually is two, right?
Is it? Well, that's what I'm asking. Do we need two?
Well, they split it. It's, they're, they're splitting the stipend. So, uh, the National Honor Society stipend.
How come the educational stipends are less than the, the ones that, for like, uh, sports?
You ever seen that college?
Honor Society Student Council?
Depends on frequency, you know, amount of times they meet, things along those lines. Let me set this up.
So, I, I guess it's hard to tell, like, if the co-advisors are right, because if they've been doing it more than three years, then the price changes, right? So, how do we know if they're right or not?
Yeah, subject to, subject to verification.
Okay.
But yeah, if you have someone who's more experienced, they may be getting half of their amount. And if someone's less experienced, they're getting half of their amount. So, they're not the same.
Right, okay. And where, like, so it's Poltoni High School Varsity Football Cheerleading Coach. Does that mean we're going to have Poltoni High School Varsity Basketball Cheerleading Coach? Cause, yes? Cause I don't see where those are broken out in the Quarry Valley extracurricular list for Poltoni.
I think it's, it's just cheerleading. I don't have it in common.
I do, and I don't even see cheerleading.
So, the only thing, I, I don't know. I know during the winter, they also have competitive cheer, correct? Is that's?
Correct.
So, so it might be seen as a different sport, because there's basketball, there are, there's also competitions that they attend.
Okay, then I guess we need an updated extracurricular from Poltoni, because there's nothing on the extracurricular for that. And three-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars is, like, off the, off the, um, extracurricular chart. Um, so...
Not all stipends are on the chart.
That's what I'm saying. I guess we need that from Poltoni, cause it's not on there.
So, those are only the ones that are in the master agreement. We don't want to add things to that chart.
No, I said, we would like, so we can have a chart to see, because there's pretty, um, there's a lot of differences. Um, and then are we seeing that the licensure board person, is, is that synonymous for standards board?
Correct.
So, why are we calling it something different there? When it's called standards in West Rutland and Proctor? And once again, it's not on the, it's not on the Poltoni schedule.
It, it's not, um, so that, and that is a merger thing. So, the Pro, the Rutland Central, the Rutland Central Schools have standards boards in their schedules prior to the merger. And, so those, those people have been making whatever is in that amount, I think, one gets three hundred, one gets four fifty-nine.
Yep.
Poltoni didn't have that in there as prior to the merger. They always split the grant that we've gotten from the state. So, their stipends usually work out to be about a hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. Uh, Poltoni Wells and, uh, Poltoni Wells and Gillman. And tho, those ones that are in the master agreement haven't changed since we've merged. There were lots of discussions about those.
Right, those are set.
So, continue, currently, what we do is, the one, the prior Rutland Central Schools get what's in there, and the prior Rutland Southwest Schools split the grant, which is usually about seven hundred dollars a year, split four ways. So, it usually works out to be between a hundred-and-sixty-five to a hundred-and-seventy-five.
So, now they've decided they want to come here and they want a stipend. So, now they've decided they don't want to do that anymore. So, who's getting the grant?
That should be what they're still doing.
Well, it says stipend to be determined on here.
Because it's the grant amount split four ways.
Okay, then I gue-
You don't have the grant amount yet.
Then I guess that, to me, when it says stipend to be determined, that means that we're determining it here like we did for some other things. So, it should say, grant funded, right?
That's what it should be.
Okay, all right.
Also note that, uh, there's thirty-three positions, twenty-three of them for Poltoni High School.
Well, I think that's because they do them by school.
Frequency, when, yeah, so others have submitted earlier.
I think, uh, Proctor's put in some, and... Yeah, yeah. I, I think it's more as they have them, so they submit them. Yeah. So, I, I, I don't think that's odd. We, we often have them like that. Yeah. All right, any further discussions?
There, uh, isn't a JV team. They don't get that stipend, correct? And the Proctor Boys Varsity Soccer Coach, is he new or no?
He coached basketball last year.
But this is his first year coaching soccer?
Mm-hmm.
And why does he get three thousand?
Because that's when you look at the extracurricular.
I don't need to pull that, I'm just wondering. I, I thought it went by, if you're a new person, you don't get the...
Proctor, everybody's is different, just like the...
Didn't Joe go over that and straighten some of that out? No, maybe he was looking at it.
Even though the, even the years are different from, Proctor doesn't do it by years, and Poltoni and West Rutland do it differently by years. Uh, West Rutland does four columns, and Poltoni does three columns. And it didn't work.
Yeah, Joe was working on that, right, kind of?
Tried like three or four years ago.
Yeah, when we were in negotiations, and it didn't come to fruition, so. It would be nice to have something, well...
Negotiations for sports coaches?
Well, things that are, yeah, in the master, so.
So, it didn't work out because nobody wanted to change?
Because there was such substantial disparity between, like Louis said, let's just look at the licensure board, so, or standards board, however you want to. So, I think here, in West Rutland's three hundred, in Proctor, they get four fifty-nine, and the Poltoni person's going to get, let's say, a buck fifty. So, that's just one position that, that you're looking at. And so, when they went through, and Joe went through, and they sat down with AD, principal diff, the number, the, the dollar amount to change was astronomical to bring everybody kind of in line, because there's such huge disparity over things. So, um, I mean, the upside is, there's a lot of things on here that we don't, don't happen anymore, so it lists them in there, but we don't fund them, so.
I think it'd be great if we tried again at some point.
Yeah.
If we have to grandfather existing
Coaches.
Coaches and what they're getting.
Yeah.
I think we need to.
Yeah.
It, it is. It, it's not equitable and it's...
Right.
What if you, uh, I don't know, you chip away at it, like?
Attrition, right.
Just do varsity basketball and get that. So, they go, yeah, and then, okay, school advisor for, you know, instead of doing a whole shot out of them.
Well, you've got to create the schedule first. Like, are you going to create a schedule? And is it going to be like, zero to three, four to six, seven plus?
Yeah, I get that, but I'm just saying, like, chip, don't go after the whole pie at once.
Right, but you have to create the schedule first, I think. How, what, what the, what the overall schedule is going to look like, number one. And then you could decide, in the first year, we're going to adhere the new schedule to, like you're saying, basketball or whatever.
That would be hard though, right? I mean, one to three years, you get this, four to six, you get, I mean, I...
I, I don't, well, it's, like you said, it's probably going to be grandfathering people in, because we don't have a lot of attrition in certain things like that. And, uh, yeah.
Are we grandfathering now, I think, or?
No, no. I mean, because every school has their own schedule. Every school, that's why the numbers are so, like, weird sometimes on here.
So, even like the sports?
Well, like sports, most sports...
I get the day advisor, the co-advisors, all the, that's all in that mess, but like, coaching should be not involved with that, correct? Or might not...
It, it's just a history thing. It, it has always been in the master agreement, and so the only way to take it out of the master agreement is through, through negotiating it out. And we, we had language in about it, and, and I'm sorry, it went round and around with some of the time. I'm not sure where, I'm not sure where we landed. Um, so I'd have to go back and refresh.
Well, I think we, we did get, we did get the sports stuff out, but we didn't get the extracurricular. That's the way it was.
So, sports is out of the...
I don't, I don't recall, I'm sorry.
Something, I...
No, 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 that's, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, but still, the schedules, that was what Joe came and gave us, um, uh, PowerPoint on, and that was, if you remember, the, the numbers, just to move everybody, I think it was like, move everybody to West Rutland's schedule, let's say that, to have the four columns. It was a huge number to do that, but that's something we certainly could, you know, look at and think about. We'd have to do that not for this upcoming year that we go into budgets. We'd have to do, like, if we said, like, in March, if, or we created a committee to do that, to look at creating the template, and then decide, like, we're just going to look at basketball for the first year or something like that.
Yeah, or baseball, or what, yeah. But if coaches aren't in there, it should be a lot easier to...
Yeah, I think we have to go back and look. I don't remember clearly.
No, not if you got enough of this.
Have a conversation with Joe and see if...
Yeah, but they did give us something out of the masters, but the extracurriculars still stay in there. We can't take them off, even if we don't do them. It was a whole, they, they didn't relinquish on everything, remember? Yeah, okay. So, I, I think that's good. We could put that on as a future agenda item, is looking at creating, um, an athletic, athletic, um...
Remember the union gave us back, yeah. I don't know if it's athletic, whatever it is.
Even for the ones that are in the master agreement, we can work on coming up with a schedule that we present.
Yeah, but you can't put that, the problem is, you can't make them any lower in the master agreement. That's what it, that's what it says. It even caveats that underneath.
Yeah, I, but there should be equity between, I mean, like, the same job and new, you have the prices in three schools, that, that's really not really...
Yeah.
I mean, maybe someone will go up and someone will go down.
And then clean it up, too, like, I've always, like, you know, Poltoni Elementary School History Teacher, sixteen-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars. I mean, why isn't that seventeen? Or why isn't that, you know what I mean? It's...
Yeah, I couldn't tell you.
Well, cause it's built on the schedule, and they've built it out with how long they've been there, so.
Time, time likes even numbers.
Oh.
Yeah, well, right here, student council advisor, six-ninety-nine.
Can we put as a future agenda item to, um, review the athletic schedule? And then, once we do that, we could create a committee or something, or, um, ask the athletic directors and principals. It's really something we want to do. It's something we should be doing, I think. Don't you?
I don't think it's, yeah, something.
Yeah.
All that different, I'd be...
So, why don't, why...
Had Joe and whoever, yeah, I don't think...
Why don't we get copies of it for a future meeting, um, review it, and then, um, we can decide at that point how we want to move forward and who we want to move forward with? All right? So, a motion would be in order to approve the contract information as provided, with, um, the licensure board being a grant-funded position.
So, vote.
Any future, any future, any further discussion?
There won't be future.
Hearing none. All those in favor?
None.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Um, resignations, the resignation, uh, the resignations must be in here, right? It was in the pocket, okay. So, I didn't... Okay, so the resignations are Jonathan Davis, West Rutland Custodian, and then from, you also have in your pocket, from Catherine McWaters, that she has purchased a home outside of Poltoni and will be leaving the Quarry Valley Board. So, a motion would be in order to accept both resignations.
Make the motion.
Motion by Mike. Discussion.
Did the custodian say why he's leaving?
I had heard that, um...
Was it money, or?
It was, you know, the position which he came from had been, uh, there's a full-time position open, and so he returned back to where he originally worked, so. So.
No?
And is closer to home, as well.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Um, with respect to the open Poltoni position, we'd like to accept letters of interest, um, through Friday, September, and I wrote it down here, eight. And they can send that to myself at my GRCSU email. And then, on the fourteenth, we will have them, you will, we can review and appoint at that meeting. They couldn't participate in the meeting, because they won't have been sworn, but at least they can be here and participate in the meeting. And, um, hopefully, we have someone, and then they'll be ready to start when we start the budget season, rather than start in the middle of budgets. Is that good with everybody?
Poltoni will take the lead on that, because they're going to know better in their town than we're, you know what I mean?
I've already found one possible, and I'm talking to the second one tomorrow.
Yeah.
But anybody's eligible, it was, it shows interest.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, everybody, yeah.
They have to submit a letter to, to be considered.
Say, the Poltoni people would know.
Talk to somebody, and all of a sudden, they do show interest after you talk to them. Because I, I think that there's a feeling sometimes of, this is too overwhelming for it, and if you talk to them and give them an idea of what, of what you do, is, I talked with somebody today for an hour about, and, and it's interesting, because again, um, people have this feeling of, I'm going to come and change the world, you know, sometimes on the board, but you explain to them, we are, uh, we, you don't make decisions, you make decisions as a board. And a lot of people do not understand that concept. I mean, I've talked to numerous people since a couple of months, and it's the same, really? Yeah, you're a board, you're one as a board.
Yep.
You know, you are, you can talk to people, but you can absolutely not tell them that you can do anything. You have to come back, you know, and tell them about the chain of command, you have to go to your principal, and, and, you know, you follow the procedure, and, or the policy, and then if you don't get anything, you go to the superintendent. And it is amazing how many people, especially if you go on and read some of the things that are on, these multimedia things that people talk about, and their perceptions and their truth of what they believe happens is completely not right, it's just, they don't understand that there is a procedure, so.
Um, and then, Chris, could we just, um, can we definitely post that on Poltoni's website? And Shannon, just kind of put that as when you.
We'll put it on the website, and maybe we can talk to Kristen and Joe about just maybe sending something out to their families.
Yeah, that would be great, thank you.
I think we didn't want to imply that it was restrictive only by us recruiting, that it's open to anybody who'd be interested.
Sure, yeah, yeah. Okay, and we have a.
We could also maybe put something in the, uh, front porch forum or something.
Oh, that's a great idea.
Yeah, that would be good. Uh, and then we did have a leave request, right?
Mm-hmm.
We did.
Okay, so, a leave request from Connor Patton, um, anything you want to say, speak to, Chris, or I guess?
I, I, I'd recommend this.
Okay, so, a motion would be in order to approve the leave request.
A motion to approve.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to find mine and give it to, in here someplace, I don't know what I'd do with that. I didn't dig through my packet since we got the updated contract recommendations, I was lazy. Okay, moving on to policies. First read policies, A1, role and adoption of school board policies. F27, communicable disease mitigation measures for students and staff. G12, proficiency-based graduation requirements, and G14, class size policy. Any comments about the first reads?
Class size policy.
Right, so like, a class would be, si, have.
Are we putting a number on that?
There's a state dictation as far as space goes, isn't there, Chris?
I'm sorry, what was it?
Class size policy.
Dictation by student size.
And it's different between.
Right, but we, we also can determine that, so.
Yeah.
And we have that in our procedures, and I would be.
And it's different between high school and elementary school. Yeah. All right? Okay, second read policies. D10, renewal of personnel. D11, public complaints about personnel. E10, fire and emergency preparedness drills. E11, access control and visitor management. F7, athletic, student athletics, clubs, and activities. And, the next one, so that is it for second reads. So, a motion would be in order to approve second reads as presented.
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And the last one is F8, interest class sports, and a motion will be in order to rescind that policy.
Who makes the motion?
Motion by Mike, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Uh, second round of public comments, we still haven't attracted anyone. Our next meeting will be September fourteenth, and we will be in our new office, which is in the Plaza.
Mall.
Plaza Mall.
It's Westway Mall.
At the Westway Mall, I'm sorry, I was trying to upgrade it. I was trying to make us look fancy. Oh, is it? Oh, mall is an upgrade, oh, okay. I was trying to make us look fancy, I thought, okay. Uh, future agenda items, you can send to Chris, myself, and we have no need for an executive session. Anything else anyone has to come before the board? Hearing none, a motion would be in order at seven eighteen to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Linda, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are adjourned.
Thank you.